All right, good evening. Today is Monday, December 7th, 2020. This is a workshop and a special meeting of the Board of Education. We actually just came from executive session. We will not be going back, we're done with that. And we're going to move on to our workshop presentation, then we have a little bit of business in the Board if you have your last. So with that, I'll turn it over to Dr. Goodman for our presentation on the strategic goals.
Good evening, everybody. I will be jointly giving the presentation tonight with our new Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology, Mr. Keough. I want to thank the Board of Education for this opportunity to review the strategic plan we adopted last year. Again, I am joined by Mr. Keough, our Director of Curriculum, Instruction, and Technology.
Thank you. I'm just sharing this screen right now with Mr. Cassin. All right. Yes, thank you to the Board for this opportunity. The review, goals, and action steps, as well as the systems of measurement you will see in the following presentation represent a collaborative effort of district and building leadership. We are excited to look back at the previously articulated strategic plan, take stock of where we are at this moment, and look ahead to where we want to go.
The Tuckahoe School District remains driven in our pursuit to prepare every student for excellence. We want this excellence to be modeled in our academics, but also in our athletic, artistic, and social-emotional programs. We do this by enhancing academic performance for success in college career and citizenship. The plans, goals, and measures we will present tonight move us in this direction. We are passionate about promoting rigorous and enriching learning opportunities that develop the whole child. Graduates of Tuckahoe should be active problem solvers and engaged global citizens. Our district and our school board value the strong relationship between the district and the community. This is exemplified by Ms. Mealy's PTA reports and the ways in which this community has come together in the wake of the pandemic in our reopening committees. Mr. Keough will speak to other ways we plan to build on these strong relationships with community leaders and organizations. Lastly, as you can hear by Ms. Slu's thorough and detailed reports, we are committed to ensuring fiscal responsibility and long-term sustainability. We see our responsibilities to the Tuckahoe students and the Tuckahoe taxpayers. We want to build on something with long-lasting, positive effects for our students and our extended community.
In terms of initiatives, we are excited about the launch of Wilson Foundations, which provides research-based materials and reading strategies. We will discuss this in further detail. This Orton-Gillingham program has already radically shifted the ways we teach reading to our youngest learners. This will be a foundation upon which future successes can be built. As such, this is a priority of ours, involving training, observations, and consultation. Teachers have remarked what welcome shift it is and have taken to the program with great enthusiasm. In addition to a committee led by Dr. Goodman, our SEL curriculum is the result of our partnership with Rethink Education. This has involved workshops and trainings with our building leaders, and we have used some of these resources to help cultivate a positive environment among adults as well. Today, teachers worked on these topics with a representative from Rethink. At COTL, iReady has helped us target support to students. It works within COTL's well-articulated multi-tiered systems of support to narrow in on students' areas of growth. We have hosted trainings with the iReady team, and teachers have been given time to explore the platform, both for its ability to provide benchmark assessments and responsive instructional modules. Meanwhile, by joining our middle school and high schools, we have begun to illustrate the scope and sequence of our math curriculum with a critical lens. The Middle School/High School ELA Literature Project was recently recognized by the New York State Reading Association as an innovative example of the outreach to young adult readers. And we are already planning on growing out the seeds of our early literacy program with an eye on reading programs and ELA curriculum throughout our system. Ultimately, we aim to map courses and content in math, ELA, science, and social studies.
This year, we find ourselves navigating a new landscape. Due to the pandemic and our laser-like focus on providing live instruction to students at home and in person, we have taken advantage of new models of teaching and learning. The plan that we developed continues to represent our core values and our beliefs. Additionally, there are many other new changes in the district. There is new district leadership, as both Mr. Keough and I kick off our first full year in Tuckahoe, working closely with our strong building leadership and our caring and competent teachers and staff. Our middle school and high school have been combined under a secondary model with one building leader. This has provided us opportunities for cross-grade planning and collaboration. Needless to say, this year we have an increased reliance on technology. And thanks to Mr. Keough, the technology coaches, and our assistance from the start with BOCs that we increase our bandwidth, we have handled pressure on our network infrastructure and worked around supply issues. We are still awaiting shipments of Chromebooks, and every day, our onsite technician and Mr. Keough work miracles on issues that pop up, as well as our technology coaches, which are fabulous. Ultimately, we have focused on synchronous learning and trained our teachers in the requisite technology and instructional approaches to meet this new landscape. It is important that we recognize that COVID-19 has demanded a district-wide focus in general and a focus on technology and instruction. This has involved purchasing and introducing new technology. We observed our instruction now with an eye toward improvement. In addition to conference days, we have hosted asynchronous learning days where we provided targeted support to teachers and support staff in a new model of instruction. We have sat in on lessons, both in the classroom and by joining Zoom calls and Google meets. We have designed simulations for teachers to experience what a lesson looks like for a student at home. We have looked at report cards and benchmarks. Through the use of NearPod, HAMI, and Freckle, teachers have made immersive digital experiences for our students. We have revised our reopening plans based on scientific data and information about how best to deliver quality instruction. We continue our focus on effective synchronous teaching. We are crafting in-person learning experiences for our students by analyzing space, redesigning classrooms, and shifting schedules. This has involved a great deal of training, flexibility, and retrofitting. What ultimately drives our hard work is knowing that the value of the instruction that our teachers provide. We are working diligently to provide this resource as safely and seamlessly as possible.
As for where we ultimately want to go, we are excited to present the goals underlying our strategic plan. With each pillar representing a different stated goal, we will describe these overarching long-term objectives alongside concrete action steps. We have linked these action steps to artifacts or systems of measurement. These can include measurable changes in track data, a presentation to families or curricular materials, or the launch of a new initiative. In the following slides, we'll break the plan into four goals. We will also highlight the associated action steps and provide examples of the changes you might expect in our movement toward these goals.
This is the strategic plan that we expanded on last year. As you can see, these pillars are the foundation of a successful district and student experience. We are now going to present each pillar in detail. We will revisit the articulated goal, discuss the action steps, and present our systems of measurement.
So our first pillar is social-emotional learning. The stated goal of this pillar is that in order to access learning and understanding, our district believes that members of our school community must demonstrate critical SEL skills. These include self-awareness, social awareness, responsible decision-making, self-management, and positive relationship skills. These are important for optimal mental, social, and emotional well-being.
In order to achieve our goal related to social and emotional learning, we have set forth the following action items. First, we establish and promote a culture for mental health and well-being by implementing an evidence-based curriculum focused on students' physical, social, emotional, and mental health needs. This includes our work with Rethink Program, a research-based program that supports wellness and coping skills. Our goal is to continue rolling this out to students in sessions hosted by our K-5 school counselor, which already started, our 6-12 health teacher, which our health teacher is doing with our students, and AP psychology teacher. Teachers are also getting trained on using this program generally in their classroom. Additionally, we will partner with families in supporting the social-emotional well-being of students by providing training and resources to families through Rethink and supporting success and well-being. We are also setting out to increase the number of volunteer activities, externships, and extracurricular activities for secondary students toward post-secondary endeavors. Under the new Assistant Principal of Student Services, all clubs are integrating the Board of Education's strategic plan goals of promoting citizenship, civic engagement, and community service. We have boosted participation in these clubs through outreach to students, and some examples of activities that they're starting is a winter food drive, reading to Cubs virtually, and shoveling snow for senior citizens. Lastly, we need to acknowledge, as we have in previous slides, the impact of COVID-19 on our strategic planning. In the wake of COVID-19, we will support students and families dealing with the effects of the global pandemic, and we have been. We have been reaching out to them. Although we are focusing on academics, as the impact of this pandemic affects that, but it also affects our students and our staff's mental and emotional well-being. In order to accomplish the articulated goals of social-emotional wellness, we need the plan that we have with Rethink, but we also are making concerted efforts to bring joy and a sense of community in Tuckahoe in our classrooms and our hallways.
The artifacts and goals, excuse me, the artifacts and systems of measurements up here will help us chart our progress in meeting these goals. This includes a successful rollout of our SEL program for students K-12, and it involves both our elementary and secondary school pilots that are currently running. We're also working with our BOCs to procure a climate survey through Panorama Education, which will assess school and climate culture by collecting valid and reliable feedback on issues such as belonging and teacher-student relationships to engagement and school safety. We recently adopted a board policy in the parent and family engagement, and we're committed to seeing increased collaboration and partnership with community agencies. Last week, Dr. Goodman and I participated in a session with local law enforcement. We see our work in promoting a positive social-emotional experience for our students as extending beyond the walls of our schools. We also will measure our efforts around extracurricular activities by examining outcomes, as well as increased participation rates. Additionally, we want to see more outreach efforts like those previously described by Dr. Goodman. Lastly, we should see effective training focused on supporting students, staff, and families in the wake of this pandemic. We should see documented in our observations and evaluations an increase in differentiation and support based on individual student and family circumstances.
Building on Goal 1, we come to Goal 2, meeting the diverse needs of learners. At Tuckahoe, we see our diversity as our strength, so it makes sense we have a goal grounded on meeting the needs of diverse learners. The goal states that we design equitable instruction and learning opportunities. This will be based in achievable, in achievement data and student strengths, interests, and abilities. This will require a focus on defining equity, promoting access, and understanding our students' strengths, interests, and abilities through a culturally responsive lens. This work began with identifying the need to implement a research-based reading program. We understand that reading, you know, we want all students to be able to read by third grade, so we brought in a new reading program for K-2. Our youngest readers are now immersed in a comprehensive curriculum that includes the essential elements of a true Orton-Gillingham program: explicit instruction in phonemic awareness, systematic phonics instruction, techniques to improve fluency, teaching vocabulary, words or vocabulary development, and reading comprehension. We have also begun reviewing access to rigorous learning activities by reviewing rosters in our Advanced Placement courses. We want to increase the representation of some of our population groups. Through the use of iReady and the continued implementation of STAR assessments and the work of our student support teams, we continue to strengthen our system of multi-tiered supports. Lastly, due to prudent budgeting and disciplined planning, we have been able to maintain small class sizes. Additionally, we set goals to establish affirming and inclusive relationships. This is done through the culturally relevant, sustaining education framework in New York State. The framework will drive our reflection and analysis. Through the Tuckahoe Equity Team, which will be beginning after tonight, Mr. Keough and I will lead conversations regarding multicultural identities and racial literacy. It is expected that increased awareness and conversation around these areas will promote introspection and inclusive learning environments. Just, there's always room for improvement. This is work many teachers in our district have expressed interest in, as well as parents, and the Tuckahoe Equity Team will help us to meet this critical area of our strategic plan. Lastly, we will address discrepancy in attendance for student population groups. Chronic absenteeism is understandably linked with drops in student achievement and student growth. And on the other hand, students who attend school, and of course, this year would be virtually or in person regularly, just do better. It just makes sense. This is an area we want to address as soon as we see problems emerging. The rates are higher for students with disabilities of absenteeism, students who identify as Hispanic, and those who come from economically disadvantaged households. And this is looking at our data from 2018-19.
As Dr. Goodman mentioned, our comprehensive review of data will provide us with reflection and benchmarks from which we can grow. This will include measured improvements in growth and proficiency for students on a state exam, benchmark assessments, and other local measures. We should also see decreased absenteeism as a result of our interventions. Lastly, feedback from our Climate and Culture Survey should show us making progress toward inclusive environments. Artifacts include professional learning on the culturally responsive sustaining education framework. This is a lens and system of review and reflection that has been instituted by New York State. It provides us with a shared language. Artifacts will include these professional learning sessions and the development and launch of the Tuckahoe Equity Team. One of the goals of this team will be a district statement on diversity. Additionally, we will promote community events focused on conversations related to diversity and bias, and celebrating the tapestry of ethnicities and races that make up the Tuckahoe community. Lastly, we will continue recruiting highly qualified staff prepared to represent and uplift a variety of cultures, ethnicities, and life experiences.
We are now turning to contemporary teaching and learning, our third goal. Preparing students for future success is, of course, the heart of our plan and the heart of this goal. This year has shown us that we need to prepare students to be nimble, responsive, responsible, and adaptive. We will do this by embedding contemporary teaching and learning strategies into all disciplines.
We are pushing toward a more challenging and relevant curriculum. This is evidenced by new texts and programs aligned with the next generation standards. We continue to evaluate software systems on an ongoing basis to address district needs and requirements. Lastly, we set out to create a more digital environment. It feels like a bit of an understatement to say that our efforts in this area were ramped up in the wake of COVID. Today, we see teachers leaving classes both in-person and online, navigating between in-person and online instruction. The district has also begun looking closely at Advanced Placement courses at the high school level. This work began last year and involved looking at AP course offerings and the numbers of seniors who participate. Additionally, we are interested in seeing how we can support rigorous high school level by increasing the level of rigor and support at all levels in the K-12 system. This can be done through increased collaboration across grades and buildings. Lastly, we want to articulate curriculum maps for our four major content areas, so we can visualize and present the long arc of student learning in the Tuckahoe system. This work is intricate, but we believe it will open up conversations and opportunities for reflection and collaboration. We've scheduled meetings for upcoming asynchronous learning days and extended days.
As for this goal, we believe there is no better artifact than a progressive, purposeful, and responsive use of instructional strategies and educational technology. The proof is in the pudding. As a result of this focus, you will hear about authentic learning experiences, formative and summative assessments with global thinking prompts, and powerful writing samples highlighting a mastery of craft and ownership of voice. We will spotlight these examples wherever possible, building on the positive momentum of our teachers' creative work. We will also build success with the Foundations Program by closely analyzing ELA and reading K-2. As far as deliverables, you will see literature studies building on diverse backgrounds and world experience with authentic application of vocabulary and dialogue. We want to promote alignment of grades K-12 across subjects and resources. This has been accelerated by consolidating our secondary grades under one building leader. Additionally, we want to focus on boosting a comprehensive response to intervention program with focus on robust interventions for Tier 2 and targeted intervention for Tier 3. The work we are engaged in through our use of benchmarks and targeted support software systems, as well as the planning sessions between teachers and intervention lists, is happening. Just today, interventionists and classroom teachers worked together on the use of our benchmarking software. These artifacts will continue to substantiate the efforts we are making in these areas. Lastly, Goal 4, focus on professional learning. In many ways, professional learning is interwoven in all these pillars, but a defined goal in this area is critical to our success system-wide. The final goal is stated in our strategic plan as listed here. It values a systemic approach to continuous professional learning, building on instructional collaboration, creativity, data analysis, and K-12 curriculum consistency and alignment.
In order to deliver on these goals, we need to equip staff with the strategies and tools to help drive our district in a bold, progressive direction. To date, technology has allowed us to make productive use of our superintendent's conference days and asynchronous learning days through synchronous workshops and meetings, asynchronous walkthroughs and presentations, hyperlinked agendas, and support guides, and immediate feedback in the form of surveys. Moving forward, an action step to help meet these goals includes the design of high-level, relevant, and ongoing professional learning opportunities. We are applying a very critical lens to professional learning opportunities, and we're prioritizing those that are dynamic and continuous with defined learning outcomes and explicit carryover into the classroom. Evaluations of these sessions and initiatives are key, so we're planning on developing evaluation methods that allow us to analyze and reflect on data based on our work with teachers. Additionally, seeing the outsized role of technology, we are interested in continuing to develop teacher capacity around the area of technology, contemporary teaching strategies, and problem-based learning. Again, this is an underpinning in the previous goals and action items, but we're prioritizing workshops focused on student engagement, problem solving, and global connections. Our peer technology coaches have been instrumental in getting into classrooms and supporting teachers' efforts, but they've also been very successful in pushing teachers forward and revealing a more robust set of tools.
To be successful in this goal, one artifact we can share will be the dynamic and continuous professional learning opportunities that Mr. Keough just described. Not one and done, that overburdens teachers, but enriching opportunities with distinct carryover to the classroom. Additionally, we will correlate student achievement data to ensure we are targeting areas of need, and we will use evaluations of these workshops to make sure our efforts are successful. Ultimately, Mr. Keough and I want to foster a culture of data literacy by supporting professional learning around its applications. We want to see these skills put to use in professional learning communities, joined together to focus on areas outlined in our strategic plan. We will also have visible outcomes in use of best practices related to differentiation. Additionally, we continue to deploy our peer technology coaches to support areas of needs. At the end of each month, we review spreadsheets of the calls and questions they answer and support. This helps define our work moving forward. Key to success of our plan is our use of data and the ways in which we reflect on our efforts. This includes both laying data, for example, state scores that come out once a year and highlight the progress of students from a previous year, and leading data, such as formative test scores, attendance, report cards, class placement, and survey responses that provide immediate feedback and drive our decision-making. Again, we don't want to just have a test score, a state test score, or any test score, to really evaluate what we're doing. That's just one of the many different types of evaluation, both summative and formative, that we would look at together with teachers. Existing process for reflection, these are some of our existing procedures for reflection and some new ones. We continue to meet regularly with building leadership, pretty much weekly, talking to our principals with a very defined outcome: special education director and facilities and finance leaders. In future asynchronous learning days and extended days, we are holding meetings with staff to review curriculum and instruction. Staff usually has instruction opportunities to meet with both their principal and Mr. Keough. It could be by grade, it could be by department, E&amp;L teachers and specialists, special education teams, and any variety of all of that. We also have the opportunity to meet with parents, such as our reopening committees, which have been really so very helpful, the ESA grant meetings that Mr. Keough held, and we have collaborated with the PTA. Lastly, the district committees, again, such as our professional council, new teacher mentors and coaches, give us the opportunity to reflect on the success and need of district initiatives with our professional colleagues and community. The district will assess the implementation of a strategic plan using a variety of quantitative and qualitative measures. This includes the item listed on this slide, and also others. All of this will be analyzed as a whole, but we will also drill down into demographic categories such as students with disabilities, English-language learners, students of color, and students from economically disadvantaged households. For example, over the last five years, 62% of our students scored Level 3 or above on the New York State 3-8 ELA, and 66% of our students scored Level 3 or above on the New York State 3-8 Math. When looked at through different filters of student demographics, areas of focus are highlighted. These numbers can and should improve upon, but we also need to continue to look at other measures. Additionally, numbers related to chronic absenteeism are figures we are committed to addressing through outreach to families and other partnerships. We also are hoping to take a little step away from some of this assessment, you know, because we know there's not going to be a regions this year, and we know that perhaps we could find other ways to get students engaged and enriched. And that's something that we are working on with teachers. And I do think that things will be changing in the future with new state leadership. These are reports, though, all of them, that we are tracking closely, including our own local assessments, and also classroom tests and report cards. This is just a snapshot of the data we can pull in our future process for reflection. We are working on ways to clearly define benchmarks, such as the development of a climate or culture survey. This will help us follow to make sure that we are on focus as we get back, hopefully, shift back to a normal school year. Data is at the heart of our efforts, and we are leveraging the fact that we are a small school to create targeted systems of support and response, and that we have such caring and professional teachers and administrators that really want to look at continuous improvement. Again, we thank you for the opportunity to help us distill our vision for this bold and progressive strategic plan. We have a resilient and forward-thinking Tuckahoe Board, schools board, and community. We are excited to move forward into the future with an eye on student success. Thank you to the Board of Education for the support of this important work. We also want to thank our district and building leaders and our faculty and staff for the input and review of this plan. We welcome any questions you have. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That was a really, really good presentation, excellent slides, too. Dr. Goodman, are these slides going to be available to the public on our site somewhere?
Sure, we could put them up on our website. I think that would be great to do that. And this is really the beginning also of the budget process for us. As we talk about what we need for the budget and supporting, I know we're going to have to be very careful this year, but we really need to look at where we want to go. So this is our first educational discussion, and our strategic plan should really lead us in that. So we will put it on our website.
Great, okay. So I'll just go around and see if any of you trustees have any comments or questions or anything like that. I guess we'll start far end of the table to me, which would be Cynthia. Cynthia, you have anything?
Yeah, I do, I just, just one thing. I do want to thank both of you, because I thought that was a really great presentation. And you was a really great presentation, and you did a great job of pulling it all together.
Falling.
And it's hard to, I mean, it was a lot of stuff, because we were so focused on the pandemic, that it's nice to hear there's so many other things going on. So really, kudos to you, your whole entire staff, both administrative and teaching. So it's good to see. I did have a question with the social-emotional learning. You mentioned the K-5, that seems pretty clear to me, but then in the middle school and the high school, you mentioned it's going to be with the health teachers, or the AP site, but what about kids who are not in that sort of?
Yes, so we're just rolling out Rethink. Today, we actually used a lot of it for our own staff professional development, because everybody, you know, our teachers themselves are so anxious, so we talked about resilience, how we could help all students with resilience, because sometimes you can't control things, but it's how you frame it, yourself-talk. So we talked about that with ourselves and our students. So there's a lot that we do in professional development that teachers bring to the classroom. We also, I think it was a very good professional development today, and teachers are going to start to sign on to use that. This is the rollout of the plan. It has a lot of great, great resources, but right now, we wanted to focus on resilience, because that's something that we're dealing with right now.
Yeah, that's.
And that was, so all the teachers were there, K-12, and we showed them 11th-grade lesson, we showed a 9th-grade lesson, we showed a 6th-grade lesson, you know, so how the program is different at different levels. But a big part of Rethink, and a lot of social-emotional programs, is first, you have to know how to do it yourself, and how not to catastrophize things, and deal in the moment, and be mindful, and those were all the things we talked about today. So it is a rollout, there's a parent component, too. This year, we are starting to just roll it out and touch on the important aspects of it. But teachers, our PPS staff is leading it, but we want it to be in the classroom. We want our teachers to understand how to impart these skills on themselves and their students, and what time is better and more challenging than to look at it right now.
Yeah, perfect time. I was not going to ask anyone a question, so that way I can save some other people if something wasn't asked. Come back.
So I'll go.
Okay.
So just to start with, thank you very much, both, for your presentation. So with regards to the foundations, foundations, and I'm thrilled to finally have a program start, because that's been something as a board that we've been involved for the district, I think, for quite some time. My concern a little bit, and maybe we could talk to about the plan, is that right now it's K through 2. And this year, for example, you have 3rd graders who really only got half of 2, so to speak. And I'm just wondering, how quickly can we bring that program? You know, my experience in elementary school is that teachers just move grades a lot, right? And so the concept is that you're training all the teachers to kind of speak the same language, teaching this literacy program where they can intervene early on, right? But I think there's a lot of kids that didn't get that at all, that are in 3rd grade, 4th grade, 5th grade. What, I guess, what is our plan to roll that out quicker than just doing it from K through 2? So I would be concerned about those 3rd, 4th graders that, you know, didn't have the advantage of having it. That's my first question.
Do you want to take that?
Sure, so we're looking closely at the grades that are not getting the foundations teaching right now through the existing data, particularly in regards to the, you know, the half a year you mentioned, and like what the impact is on that. So right now, what we're doing is we're really focusing on the MTSS program to make sure that we're providing all the intervention supports that would provide some of those reading strategies. Our interventionists are working very closely with classroom teachers, using the pool of data that we discussed here, but even more so.
Ms. Bauer also is looking at more Orton-Gillingham programs for our intervention staff, so that they can, some of them are trained, and, you know, there's different levels of training with them, so a lot of the social education meetings she's having with staff is around using Orton-Gillingham strategies with students that have not picked up either through AIS or if they are already mandated to use that in their ELA work with students.
That's great. I mean, obviously, not one size fits all, because, you know, it's great to just have a program, so that there's uniformity, but obviously, it's good to have other interventions for those children that, you know, might be struggling due to not having, you know, only having maybe half a year. But I just have one other quick question, which is, so that's the ELA portion. With the math, in regards to, so I know that we started to talk about science, K through 12, science 21, I think it's called. It sounds like we're on the path to uniformity, K-12 literacy, and ELA. So can you just talk a little bit about math and what that looks like? When you talk about curriculum mapping, which I've heard in this district for years, I remember one of the first focus groups I went on, I think my high school was in kindergarten, and they talked about these maps that we had back then. Some of them were implemented in some grades, some were not, so we never really, in my mind, consistently went. So could you talk a little bit about math and what a curriculum map might look for the school in terms of that?
Yeah, curriculum maps is kind of a term that really is amorphous, it looks different in different districts, and also shouldn't be like a stationary document, like a map that never changes, you know, there's shifts in landscapes, there should be shifts in curricula. So we've started talking in the math department, given what this year has looked like, especially in the middle school in terms of algebra and kids and what courses they're taking. So that's really driven a lot of the conversations we've had. Where ultimately do we want our math learners to go? What opportunities and pathways do we want to see presented to them? And that's naturally led to a conversation about curriculum maps. And what are the desired goals we have? What are the objectives we have for the different grades, for the different courses? And using different software that allows teachers to collaborate in different templates to map out their units. So for example, maybe, you know, you do units, you do fractions in unit 1 of 7th grade, and then do proportions and ratio in unit 2. A 10th-grade teacher who's seeing that kids are really coming with a, you know, a lack of understanding of those two topics, can kind of go back to see where that misunderstanding might have happened, and we as a district can then kind of narrow in on that spot of the map to see how we can strengthen that area. And I think I mentioned in the presentation, it's an intricate process, because there's so many different pieces, there's so many different parts to put on that map, so it's probably why you've heard the conversation so often, you know, or for such a long period of time, because it is an involved process. But it's a process we're really interested in seeing through, because there's great value in seeing that articulated for kids and for the adults in the system.
Right, and I think that, thank you, and I think that the reading, I was reading an article about, you know, great schools, or it was just in general, talking about what makes it a great school, and the author was talking about the schools that showed the highest level of performance are, have great readers, you know, they have kids that can really, because it translates to math, we all know that once they get to certain, you know, the algebra. So I think that was why my first question was really getting a sense of getting these struggling readers really quickly, early on, and picking up, you know, so that they can, they can catch up. And then math is another concern, so I'm excited to work on these goals and the strategic plans, so thank you.
Chris, Laura?
Okay, so, yes, thank you both, that was a great presentation, so thank you. Obviously, there's a lot of work that goes into all this, and I appreciate it. I guess I just want to piggyback on what Laura was saying about math. So my oldest kid is in 8th grade, and since I've entered, and obviously, this is far before your time, Mr. Keough and Dr. Goodman, but in this district, we've been having the same conversations very often, and math seems to be something where there is a major disconnect between 5th and 6th grade. And I guess specifically, I understand kind of at like a higher level, the overall goals, but to kind of get into the details of that, and what we can do now for these students, because I think of a lot of what we're talking about, like foundations and all this is going to benefit kids that are younger within this district, and they'll have a different experience, which is awesome, but I also think that the kids that are in it right now, we need to kind of do something there. And one question I've always had, you know, for the math program specifically, is the district adopted this Envisions program years ago.
Mm-hmm.
And it just like falls off at Caddell and doesn't go to 6th grade. And then when you, in the past, when I personally have come to the board meetings and questioned curriculum, and, you know, why is there no fluency from grade to grade? And why isn't a program that we have in our elementary school then being, the kids are familiar with format of it, like why is that not being pulled up into the middle school? And why is it so segmented? Because it seems that in like my experience with the middle school, I don't have any experience with the high school, but that it's, there is a big disconnect, and I think to the point that the kids really lose at the end.
So Mr. Keough and I just recently had, you must have been like sitting like right in our discussion.
I'm everywhere, Amy.
Yes, and we were just talking about that. Look, and Envisions really has been successful. We're trying to look at the, actually, our math grades in middle school are good, too. And we don't just want to go on state tests. We know that there is a lot of talk about math. Our math teachers have been very invested with Mr. Keough this year. I think that they've met a number of times. We're thinking about, there is a middle school Envisions program and exploring that for next year. But I think that the math department has been working a lot, very hard and very well, but you could say.
Yeah, I agree, and I think necess, like the area of transitions is very hard, I think particularly in math. So I think looking at the 5th to 6th grade, and then the 8th to 9th grade are usually areas that districts focus in on their attention. I believe last year, there were conversations about Envisions and where it ended, and if it should continue into upper grades. So we've requested some materials to review in terms of the 6th grade Envision curriculum. And then we're also looking at the upper grades and the materials they're using, namely eMath instruction, to see what that has to offer the 6th and 7th grades, because a lot of the conversations we're having related to the course offerings at the high school level have implications for the years that you're talking about, the 5th to 6th grade and the 7th grade. So we're looking in, as part of these conversations, as part of these very early maps, why the decisions were made to keep certain curriculums, and which ones would make the most sense considering the, you know, the path we want for a Toccoho student. So Envisions is definitely a part of the conversation.
So we do, again, back to what you're saying, we do usually, in every district, find this like very difficult, probably more difficult, going from elementary to middle school than middle school to high school. And we do see that here, not as much actually as I see it in some other school districts. I think math is the hardest jump for our students, so that's why we decided to focus on that first.
I also think math has been an area that has not had the, I don't know what the right word, I'm trying to choose my words carefully, like, I think it's been too fragmented. I think there hasn't been enough constructive leadership within that department in the last few years. I think our math department from middle and high school have taken some pretty serious hits. There's been a lot going, and this would be nothing you guys would know about, but there's been a lot of drama within our math. And I think that that never brings about anything positive, and certainly not productive. So I do feel like, even though I agree with Laura, and I think reading is by far the most important thing, and everything hinges on that, I think that math needs to be right there for our district specifically, given our history.
And Mr. Keough has started with math, and he's, I think you've been impressed with the teachers and their willingness and their creativity to start looking at, again, math is like ELA, social studies, even science to an effect, you know, can be similar, math is here. It should be related to reading, but it isn't always as easily transcribed that way.
Right.
It is sort of like its own language, so I think that we picked math for lots of reasons, so that is the first group that Mr. Keough is really honing in on in terms of, you know, the trajectory of our courses and for our students.
Right, and, you know, going back to the goal with having equity within our education, it shouldn't be that the kids who then do well in math are from the parents who can afford to supplement their math programs outside of school.
Right.
Which I think people have definitely done. From what I've heard, like I'm not speaking, this is just community feedback and things I've heard from people who have older children who are now, some of them are gone out of this district recently. So that's it for me.
And also why they, some of our parents opt to leave the district at certain points, you know, middle school or in high school, looking to jump to a private school setting or some other educational environment because of that. My question had to do with the three, with the last two colleagues of mine, with the Envisions. Is Envisions the best program to use? Because, you know, maybe there's others that could serve our students better, you know?
Mr. Keough.
I mean, I haven't been super impressed. I mean, if we've been using it for the last several years and we haven't seen much improvement, maybe it's the programming, maybe it's professional development for our teachers and supports that they need. I mean, you know, I'm just wondering about Envisions. Maybe you can speak to that a bit.
So things about Envisions that I've come to learn, you know, in getting to know the district and getting to know the curriculum, you know, Envisions has its name, it's about envisioning and seeing. And one of the things that I think works really well, especially the K-5 level, is for kids to see the math, and so much of where the next generation standards are going has to do with applications of math. And Envisions really does capitalize on that. I don't know if some of its competitors capitalize on it better, but I've been very happy to see the ways in which kids are doing problem-solving, as opposed to just rote answering questions that are related to a math concept.
I have observed that.
So I have a question, sorry.
Sorry.
Is there any, like, when you were talking about the two different programs here, the one in high school, and I just may not be, this may be a very simple question, but are there not curriculums that go like K, whatever, 4 through 12, or is everything always fragmented?
Every state has its different definitions of different math programs, so it's usually hard to find nationally, you know, this is the math program for a K-12 system, especially when you start looking at programs like math that are going to have calculus and, you know, trigonometry, and like these higher, you know, college-level courses. You know, it's interesting, like with math, for example, there, you know, there isn't technically a 10th, and 11th, and a 12th grade math, there are different courses you can take at those levels.
Right.
So it doesn't necessarily follow the same progressions of other programs, but similar, you know.
But isn't it like algebra, geometry, trig, isn't that how it goes?
It can.
Or am I just stating myself?
No, I mean, like you've probably heard, like through the years, like sequential math, or Math A, or, you know, the, you know, algebra, trig, and geometry, and like all the ways those are ordered. Some states do it differently, you know, and, but then there's things like the College Board with their AP courses that, you know, again, we've mentioned in our program, in our presentation, we want to get kids to a place where they can, they can go for those courses. That requires us to look at those requirements and work our way down. Usually, a program that's really geared for K-5, I don't know, I mean, there might be one that really does kind of build up to those levels, but we usually see, as we get to the older grades, the need to look for materials that target more those higher-level courses, like those AP courses.
My observation of Envision, though, Envisions is that, I happen to have observed some lessons, I thought that they were really taught very well, and taught on math literacy, different than the way you might remember math, but certainly a greater understanding of math concepts. So I have, you know, there, we should look at others, but I have seen that program to be higher-level.
I was going to say, I do have curriculum for our schools, and I do find Envisions to be one of the better ones.
So does Envision.
And that's why I always question, why it wasn't being used in the middle school?
Right.
Because it does work very well for the K-5, and they get used to, I guess, digging into it that way. They do have a better understanding of it. Like, it is something, when we're looking at it, we go, oh my God, like, why can't they just like add it up? They have to like look at all this stuff? But they get a deeper understanding of it.
Right, which I appreciate totally, and I'm not by any way, shape, or form a curriculum expert, as evidenced by my last question. But I, my question more is, why is, why are we so fragmented here at Toccoho? And why, if they're, like if Envision goes to 7th grade, I have no idea to 8th grade, like why haven't we just adopted it when we've been using it for this many years?
I don't think all of them have. Like, it used to be that it would just be just elementary, and now more and more, I think a lot of the math programs are going to the middle school. And like Mr. Keough said, with the high school, it is very different. So you're not going to have a program that's going to go, like Envisions, up to, because each class is different, algebra, geometry, algebra II, calc. Those might be its own.
That I can understand, but it seems to me like the, and again, I don't know. That I can understand, but it seems to me like the, and again, I don't know and I could be wrong and correct me, like that K through six or K through seven should be somewhat unified.
Well, we are, we are looking at that. They also have, they're using a different math uh curriculum that's more related to that right now in in the middle school and sixth grade, right?
Yeah, and and I think that's what's happening. It's like the those middle age groups, do they lean more towards what's being done at the younger grades? Or do they lean more towards what's do being done at the upper grades? The e-math instruction versus the invigils? And I I think a reason you might not see, for example, a perfect curriculum that goes from K to eight is that some districts, for example, have different um expectations for eighth graders. You know, some want all kids in algebra, some get, so there's not always a prescribed plan for each school. And some of the conversations we're having, especially in kind of these early curriculum mapping conversations, about where we need to strengthen, where we need to put some standards, um, we're given a little bit more freedom. Um, if we don't have, you know, invigils, which might be building off of the last years, we might need to kind of find a marriage between the two. So that's what makes those age groups, because they're kind of at this like keystone between the two, um, really kind of hard to to, you know, sort out.
But we are.
But not impossible.
But we picked math as our first focus, you know, once we got through all the pandemic stuff and we're still getting through that, but the first focus that Mr. Keo is having having and the teachers have been, again, very excited, very open, very helpful, talking about all of this. So it's been a true focus on math. Even our first um training in a different type of co-teaching happens to be in a math class.
Great, good, cause it needs attention, so I think that's good.
Big time. And then with the matter, I'm just so happy about the equity team and all the um points that you brought up, that that is terrific. Um, I'm appreciative of the artifacts that will show improvement or not and and uh what we need to do moving forward. Um, my next question has to do with with that, with matters of equity. So as Teres just spoke about, um, for for some kids whose families can't make the sacrifice to find support, um, I think that we have to do a better job at making sure that tho the needs of those students are being met. Otherwise, there's no point for AP courses, cause you won't have anybody in them, really. Maybe one or two kids. And particularly when we talk about students of color, um, I think they're, I know they are underrepresented. I've done my homework here on this district. They they are underrepresented in those higher tiered um college preparatory um classrooms. And so I'm wondering uh what if the strategic pan plan really builds that in? And um, when you talk about um matters of uh chronic absenteeism, what kind of measures are we thinking about uh using to help with that? So, you know, restorative practices is a really big thing right now. Um, are it, is any of that incorporated to make sure that certain populations are uh have access to the supports that they uh, those students will need to move forward? And potentially have, you know, moving a trajectory towards it, for example, an AP course?
You know, the first thing that you that we would have to do with chronic absenteeism, and now we're just starting to look at that, is is again, it's again, another one side of this all. We have to reach out to those families and find out what is going on. You know, then we need to intervene and see what we need to do. If a student has chronic absenteeism, which is more than ten percent, being more absent more than 10% of the school year, which isn't that much if you really think about it, we need to um, we have this letter that we're going to send out and we're going to start calling families, especially during the pandemic, to find out, cause we're looking at absenteeism, whether it's remote or online and find out or or in person, what's going on. Sometimes it could be that the child is sick and we don't know. The child's asthmatic and it's not getting the help that that child needs and is not feeling well. Sometimes it is that, you know, it, I found that it could be that the the child's babysitting for other kids in the house. I mean, we have to find out what it is. So that's part of how you deal with chronic absenteeism. If there's a restorative practice type of um intervention that you need to do, that you do a lot of times for, um, you know, if kids feel like uh they were done wrong or something like that, you could do a resort restorative type of practice with them. So there's different reasons why kids aren't coming to school.
Sure.
And that's where we have to start first. I mean, again, when we have high percentages here, sometimes it's because we have low percentages of certain groups. So when we pull out a number of students, it looks higher than it is. And it's not like it's not something we can't, you know, if we say that there's chronic absenteeism, let's say in the Latino community, it could be just a few kids. But because of the way that we have a few kids, we can, we can get there. But if we don't start looking at the data, then we don't know that that exists. And it's not, you know, there are, it's across the board. Some parents just don't, for whatever reason, have their child going to the school every day. It's not a lot here and we're not very high, as I've seen, like when I was in New Rochelle or other districts. It could be very, very high in certain groups. It's higher than it needs to be. Another group is students with disabilities. We need to um understand why their attendance isn't as good as students without disabilities. And there could be so many reasons. You know, it could be something that you would need a restorative uh practice, but it could also be that school's hard and it gives them a stomach ache and they're anxious in the morning and all of those things. So it's really, we'll uncover what we need to uncover, but we also need to make sure that every single subgroup feels welcome and supported in a school. And that's just the bottom line.
And I think too, you know, when when some, when students are disengaged because of whatever they're experiencing within the school day, maybe it is the lack of support. Maybe I don't understand this, my family can't afford or afford to make the sacrifice. To they do check out. And so I think that it's important that um our staff, from not just the classroom teachers, but even our support staff, um, you know, you're talking about the social emotional piece, that everybody is speaking the same language and treating the students the way that they should be uh treated and making sure that those needs are met. So I'm I'm really pleased to to see that part.
That's something we could have spoken about at the Equity Committee. Um, when we define equity and we define the needs of what kids, and that could have a growth in terms of what we ask for in the budget, what we need, or reexamination of maybe some of the supports that we have. So it'd be great to hear all those voices.
Well, I also think when we're speaking about the budget, I know now is probably not the best time to spend money, I get that totally. Lee's like, oh, she's like, no. Um, but I have heard also um very positive feedback about um Shakira McKinley, the fit this um, the.
Guidance counselor.
School counselor.
The guidance counselor in K through five and how she's really doing a really great job um down at Cottle. So if there was a way, like Cynthia was saying, to bring somebody, clone her, I don't know. She would have to get paid to clone her, but, you know, to bring that person into the middle and high school, cause there are so many social issues that go on.
Yes, and we did um increase, actually, with Ms. McKinley in um elementary, we brought up half of a psychologist to give more support to the middle school, high school. I mean, there is a lot of outreach in the middle school, high school and the PPS staff. They will go to homes and make home visits. I mean, they really have, especially during this pandemic for the last, since last March, really have reached out. But um, we could look at what our needs are in the middle school, high school, um, and maybe we can re-envision something when we come to the budget. I think that's a good idea to think about that. I mean, that kind of, you know, counselor or social worker or something like that, we could, we could look towards that possibly, but I know Ms. Lee does. I just complimented you in my presentation.
Now you know the reason.
Um, and then my my other question is, might sound silly to ask, but your your equity team, is it a diverse team of people working on the?
We just started it, we wanted to do the presentation. I wrote an email last year and um Mr. Keo wrote another email this year, blast. And it seems like it is um definitely a diverse group.
More diverse group of, okay.
Um, we'll send that out again and you can join it, you can join it. You know, we'll see who we get, but we're going to make sure that there's diversity. And it just seems to, so far, looking at the people who signed up, have a diverse group. But I think that's really important. And whatever we do on that team, that we get the voices of people diverse.
Exactly.
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 Dr. Goodman, can you speak a little more about how you, how that team will be utilized and how that team will work?
Right, well, the first thing with that team is that we need to get it together. We want to have a definition of equity. Um, we think that it would be great to start our discussions. Uh, Mr. Keo has a a group read, actually, that he thought would be good for us to look at.
Yeah, we have a an anchor text, um, The Person You Mean to Be by Dolly Chug. Um, uh, so that would be a good opportunity for us to kind of engage in conversations about bias and um and topics that might make people feel uncomfortable when they're discussing, uh, topics of race and identity. And um, from that, maybe using that anchor text as a way of having conversations around uh decisions we make, data we use, um, and and things like that. Uh, some of the deliverables we wanted to uh see come from this committee particularly is uh some type of presentation or evening where we talk about, uh, we bring someone in or maybe, you know, have a roundtable conversation. Um, and um, a statement, a district statement on diversity and our, you know, our our district's view on diversity.
Right, and not just, you know, look at it.
Is it made up of of staff, staff, administration or students as well? What what are we talking about here?
We we had started with staff and parents, but students is a great idea to add to it. I think that would be great to have some students on it.
I think so too.
Okay, so it's still, still sort of work in progress in terms of.
We just um did an outreach last year and Mr. Keo um reached out to staff this year. Did you, uh, did we, did we reach out to families? We were going to wait till after this meeting when we presented this to, you know, get started.
Uh, Laura, do you have anything further before before I go?
No.
Okay. Okay, so uh, yeah, I'll throw like my ten cents in. Uh, once I'll also say, great presentation, Dr. Goodman and Mr. Keo, um, really well done. I like the way um you tied it action and evidence um uh bullets into every every goal, which is, which is great, very, very, very well presented. You know, what I love about our goals is I love the way they they sort of interclimb with each other. They they really are, really are kind of, they all bleed into each other. The one, to me, the one that they all build around, and this may be just my my own bias, but the one they all build around is that contemporary teaching and learning goal. I feel like, you know, diverse learning needs and diverse learners and professional learning uh in particular, really are to feed that. Um, I did, I did like a lot of the um mentions in the diverse, uh, these are learners section uh about looking at culture and race. I think that's all great. Um, but I also don't want us to get myopic about that. I think one of the original reasons of that goal was also to look at just the way different kids learn in general, irregardless of of race and culture, just identifying the fact that different kids learn differently um and have different ways in which they they absorb information. Um, and and we want to kind of make, deliver our curriculum in a way that kind of gets to everybody, which is why I think it feeds so well into the contemporary teaching and learning, cause I think that's all about, contextualizing the information we're trying to give them. So, look, I'm going to use this time to to put my plug forward, but I always do. I'm a big project-based learning um guy. I I really believe in it, particularly at the high high school level, at the upper level of of learning. Um, I really want to see us get bold here and and go in and and take that part of the goals and really think about, really think about and do the research and have the conversations around making our high school a project-based learning high school. I mean, really, or um, not just taking a traditional curriculum and throwing some project-based learning in there, actually making our high school a project, a project-based learning high school. That's a bold thing to do. I'm not saying that we definitely should do it. I I'd like to see us look more into that. And I'm and I'm wondering if in the professional learning piece of it and in the work that we're doing, if we're, if we're looking at some schools that have done this already and and if we're, if we're sending, you know, if we're doing that research and bringing it back to our district and thinking about um actually doing this at a high level. You know, Mr. Keo mentioned how and with discussion about math. To me, as I hear you talking about invigils and what invigils is based on, which is the application, actually understand the application of math, the perfect segue of invigils is into project-based learning. So if you have an invigils mathematics program uh in your elementary school and early part of your middle school, then you transition that into project-based learning. That to me is a perfect transition in the way it really should work. Um, cause that whole purpose of project-based learning is is really to contextualize and see how the math is used and why it's used. Um, so, so what are, are we, are we looking into that at all? Are we, are we sending in, um, are we looking at any schools that have actually done this in a bold way and thinking about bringing it here to Tuckahoe? And uh, and and that feeds into the project, the professional learning piece, which is getting our staff and our and our teachers thinking about this as well. And anyway, so any, any thoughts about really bringing this in a, at a, at a big, in a big way? And to me, as the last thing I'll say, but I'll shut up, but to me, building off of our block scheduling that we've been doing because of COVID, um, is is something I don't want to see us go backwards on. Block scheduling is a big part of projects-based learning. Has there been any discussion amongst the administration about trying to keep that even after COVID and build upon that towards project-based learning?
Well, first of all, a couple of things. We have been talking about project-based learning. It is in our little pamphlet that we made for teachers on our goals. Um, and this year, we're hoping to use this, and we just started talking about this, this opportunity that I would say I'm pretty sure, like probably ninety-nine percent sure there's not going to be a region. Some of these tests, not that you can't do well on the test with project-based learning, but some of these tests kind of keyhole you into doing things a certain way. And I'm hoping that this year could be, and Mr. Keo, we've talked with the administration already about that, about taking some risks this year and being a lot bolder in our curriculum, especially having the block scheduling and having the tests which like weigh over us a lot because we know that people may assess our district that way, our board may, they think we may. And I know schools that have not been tied up by the test, like when they say, I don't really care about the test because we can do it this way, they don't always get the best test scores. They really truly don't, cause that test doesn't really always really measure this um problem-based type of critical thinking. It just, it just really doesn't. So we could do that. We're trying to branch into that this year, especially with our block scheduling and not having those tests over us, but that would be a decision that we would have to make. And I think that's why you don't see a lot of PBL around. I I've had classrooms with project-based learning, but again, if the board wanted to see and we wanted to see it was a different population, the students really be engaged and they were. It really brought them into school and thinking differently, but that's something that we can really look at.
One of the uh committees that we are um launching soon will be the the curriculum committee. Uh, and uh, we're big fans of anchor texts. Um, so uh, we were looking at Ted Dintersmith's What Schools Should Be, which has different examples of um the models of schools that you've described, Mr. Cassidy.
I'm very familiar with his work. I've read his book and and watched his documentary and I'm a big believer in that. Now, I I think, Dr. Goodman, you're a little hard for me to understand, so a little baffled.
Oh, I'm sorry. I know.
Or I am, obviously, so I apologize. But I think what you were saying is that, um, or were you saying that is evidence or or data that shows that project-based learning in schools don't score as well on tests? Is that, is that what you were saying?
Well, I'm saying that schools that have, you know, I can't, I don't want to mention a specific school district, that at one point, when the regions were out, said, you know, we're going to do what we're going to do because we know that we, our kids, I mean, they still did well on the regions, but they didn't. When they started to put schools together or the fourth or eighth grade test, whatever, this was a great school district that wasn't coming out as great because if you're not teaching to the test, so I think, I'm not saying we want our kids or ignore the test and you can problem solve well, you know, on anything. But that test sometimes really does make people very nervous and they want to go lockstep so that, you know, we can show that our students scored a certain way. Uh, you know, I'm not saying to throw that away either, but I don't, if we don't teach to the test, they say, if you do project-based learning, kids will still do well, they could do better. But if they don't know how that test is organized, no matter what you do, they're not going to do as well as they would have done if you didn't do some test prep for that test. So I'm not saying that you can't do well on the test. I'm just saying let's be bold, especially. I'm just saying, let's be bold, especially this year, and let's see, let's see how much our kids learn doing this. But I think a lot of places that you can't see a lot of PBL because of all of these structures that have been placed on public school districts.
Maybe the region.
Well, we're going to.
And then we can do all project-based learning. It is a lot of pressure for teachers. I mean, I'm not going to lie, the tests are a lot of pressure for them, because it's reflective of them, and, and they're not set up in the way that maybe the real world is.
I, I totally get it. I mean, I, I know, just, just trying to, you know, my, just trying to help my son this year with algebra. You know, it's a lot of, it's a lot of material that the teachers are trying to cover. And it's, it's difficult to not just follow the recipe and get through the, the material. And then obviously, like you said, you know, we are all concerned about how our kids test, particularly with college, you know, entrance exams. So I, I'm not saying that we need to just recklessly charge ahead on this. I know there is some risks, certainly. But I'd like to make sure that we, as a district, our administration, and you and your staff, that we're doing the research, and we're actually looking at those schools and finding out whether or not it's actually true that those students don't do as well on those tests. But then also consider, and this is as a community, come in to decide, you know, there is a risk to not teaching to the test, so to speak. There's also a risk to not preparing those, our kids for what really they're going to be encountering later on. And I do believe that the standards for what kids need to get into college is going to change. It's going to change soon, I think. And, and, and I don't want to see us playing catch-up. And that's why I also say that, in some respects, you have to go all in on it. Because if you are a school that, a high school at least, that is a project-based learning high school, and you build a reputation for that, then I think when our kids are applying for colleges, that's baked into it. Like, they, you know, they, there's something they can speak to in their applications that other kids can't, even if their, you know, their, their traditional test score doesn't high. So I mean, all the stuff I, I know is, is not easy, and, and there's, there's a sort of balance to play. But I do think school needs to change, and I do think we, I, I don't want our, our high school to be a school that all we're concerned about is getting our kids ready for college. I mean, I know it's important, but I, I would like to see high school be more than that. I'd like to see high school be about getting our kids ready for life, you know, beyond TACO. So, anyway.
Well, I absolutely agree. I'm not disagreeing at all. You know, where I stand on that, and I think contemporary teaching and learning, you know, whatever you want to call it, project-based learning, is about problem solving, and is about critical thinking. And as we infuse that into our curriculum, especially this year, when we have a lot of opportunities and our teachers are getting very facile in using technology, which is a big part of project-based learning, I think that we are moving in that direction. I think that there's a piece to studying schools, but there's also a piece to learning a different way of teaching. And it is something that, with the contemporary teaching and learning, and with the professional learning development that we're doing, is you start to infuse that in. It's, and it's something that's happening right now, much more, because we've kind of been pushed into this block scheduling. We've been, our teachers have learned so much on how to use technology that we're much higher level now than we were last year. And I think this is an opportunity to start to infuse that into our curriculum. Because it really is about instruction. It's about the text that Mr. Keough talked about, that you really have to understand, and you have to start working with, that you really learn how to teach in a problem-based way. So I do, I agree. I just, I think this is an opportunity.
It's our future plan, we, this crisis of Corona, you know, in some ways could be a segue to it. I just, I just want us to be bold on it, and really think about it, be smart about it. I'm not saying be reckless, and I know there's a lot that goes into it, there's a lot. There's something, something that's going to be a risk, no doubt. And I'm just one more than I have five, so I'm, I'm just giving you my two cents. I, I think, I'd like for the discussion about, when it comes to contemporary teaching and learning, I like for the discussion to be about project-based learning, at least that we're doing the research and we're actually really considering it in a, in a very bold way. Because I, I, I think we should be bold about it, in my, my personal opinion. I, I think, I think the change is coming, and I think we as, we at TACO, given our size, our diversity, we have the ability to be on the forefront of that, and I'd like to, I'd like to see us be on the forefront of it.
I'd like to be on the forefront of it, too. I'd like to be on the forefront. And I think that, that TACO needs to find its way to, to make its name. I think we have done some things this year, even, you know, being bold about bringing back students in the wake of a pandemic. And I think that we can do this in curriculum and instruction also.
I have one, I have one last question, which, just because you're focusing on math, Ms. Shakira. If it ever came up in regards to the, the sequence of the courses, like, you know, doing, because some schools do do algebra, and then they do algebra two instead of geometry. So there's none of that lapse of, because geometry is like sort of standalone. So I was curious if that ever came up, like, was that ever a thought?
Yeah, it's definitely, I mean, we've, you know, we've done the thing with the whiteboard and, and putting the, the classes in the different areas, and talking about the different progressions that kids can take. I don't know if I could answer that specifically, but it's definitely been discussed.
I just wanted to do something that came up.
Yeah, and, and I think it's also maybe, you know, part of the way that TACO's traditionally seen the math progression. And I'm, I'm sure there's a, a reason for it. I'm just glad I can't tell you what it is.
That's it.
Okay, are we, everybody good? Any other comments or questions?
No.
No.
All right, so I think we're good, Dr. Goodman.
Thank you.
Thank you very mu, thank you very much. It was a really great presentation. Appreciate the time and effort. Thank you, Dr. Shakira.
Thank you, thank you.
Well, we did.
Thank you.
Very, very little bit of business to take care of tonight, not much at all. So we'll just burn through that, and then we'll, we'll be up. All right, so our first agenda item on the board is a, is a reading of policies. We have two, this does not require a vote. This is just the presentation of two policy changes. I'm not going to read them. They are available on board docs for anybody to, to read. This is the first reading of these, of these policies. They're both existing policies that have been amended to comply with current law and current legal requirements. One is a homeless children's policy, NASS policy number 5151. And it's a, and a parent and family engagement policy, policy number 1910. So those will be ready to get in our next meeting. And if anybody wants to read the details of those changes, they can go onto our website for board docs, and they can do so. Okay, next item is the grooming of an agreement resolved by the Board of Education, the TACO Union Free School District, hereby approves decreed by and between the district and Tony and Vannari, DD, for K through two teachers in integrating the foundations program and olderity instruction programs for the period November 1st, 2020 through January 31st, 2021, not to exceed $3,000. Do I have a motion? Teres, second, Laura, a discussion? Nope, all in favor? Laura, I see Teres, I see Laura, and I see Cynthia. Okay, great. All right, next is another agreement to approve. Resolved by the Board of Education, the TACO Union Free School District, hereby approves decreed by and between the district and ISAMARIS SLP to perform speech-language therapy coverage effective October 19th, 2020 through June 30th, 2021, at a rate of $135 per hour, not to exceed $30,000. Do I have a motion? Teres, second, Laura, a discussion? Nope, all in favor? Cynthia, Laura, Teres, Laura, okay, good. And last personnel recommendation. Resolved on the recommendation of superintendent of schools, the Board of Education, of TACO Union Free School District, hereby appoints Marino Ayandala as per diem substitute aide for 2020, 2021 school year, at a rate of $16.05 per hour. Do I have a motion? Laura, Teres, second, a discussion? Okay, all in favor? I see Laura, I see Teres, Laura, and I see Cynthia. All right, great. Okay, that's it, that's all we have. Do I have a motion to adjourn? Cynthia, second, all in favor? And then I see everybody. Okay, great. Thank you very much. Very much, everybody. Good night.